Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on September 23rd. Welcome to this regular Board of Directors meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Director Bookenegra has our land acknowledgement.
Thank you, President Weatherspoon. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowals tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
Director Perkins moves to adopt tonight's agenda as presented, seconded by Director Bookenegra. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Before we begin our public comments this evening, I have an update for signing up for in-person public comment. Community members will now be able to register to speak during public comments on our website. Starting with the first board meeting in October, you'll be able to sign up to speak in person directly on the district website. The request to speak link will be located next to the meeting information on the main page of our website and under Request to Speak on the Community Board Meeting and Policy Information page. All future requests for in-person public comment will be submitted through the Request to Speak platform. If you require assistance, please call the superintendent's office. If you arrived at the board meeting before the start of the, before the start time and would like to sign up to speak, two laptops will be available near Lori's desk for your use. For virtual comments, the process remains the same. Please call the superintendent's office by noon on the day of the meeting. Thank you. So, any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes, and there is no mechanism by which a speaker can donate some or all of their time to another speaker. So we have five people signed up virtually to speak. Our first person is Angie Bunda.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, my name is Angie Bunda. I have two kids in the school district. Back in June, I gave a speech about everyone having a limit, a line that is eventually crossed where they can no longer stand idly by and watch corruption continue, where the transgressions of those around them can no longer be covered up or purposely ignored to try and maintain the district's image at the expense of our students, staff, and community. I said that everyone eventually reaches that pivotal moment where they finally say no more and must stand up and speak out for what is right. And a lot has happened since that day in June. A lot. We've seen a lack of acknowledgement or action from the very people who should lead and act on behalf of students and stakeholders. We've witnessed unfair labor practices and CBA violations go completely unaddressed. Unprofessional behaviors and words from the district negotiators have been avoided and ignored. Emails and flash alerts were sent to both parents and staff completely lying about situations, and our board has remained silent. In June, I said keeping things quiet and allowing them to continue for the sake of the district's reputation has done the exact opposite. Everyone has learned of the behaviors and actions by EPS, and now stakeholders have seen firsthand that those who should be the checks and balances we desperately need are instead blindly following and proving negligent on their oath to act in the best interest of our students and to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer funds. For those who decide to remain silent about what I know that you know has happened and is continuing to occur, the community will not forget. As a leader, once you are aware of a situation, you have two choices: to allow it to continue for whatever justifications you create, or to be the person who stops toxic cultures and corrupt behaviors for the sake of the children, families, and staff you are supposed to be serving. People have been asking more questions and new things are coming to light. Pretty soon, many things will be known by the community, and a lot more questions will arise. We've provided you with letters of concern regarding a matter of public trust of a public officer or employee. Hard copies have already been turned into the PA's office, and there are more coming. Everyone has a limit, and to see that you have not yet met yours is truly disappointing. However, our community will not fade away. We will continue collaborating and bringing up the issues. We will keep emailing, calling, and speaking out to ask for acknowledgement and accountability. And for every call or email that is ignored or simply gets a "thank you," your email has been received and then is never addressed again, we will see the true motives of our leaders and whether they are going to be complicit rubber stampers or decision-makers who value integrity, accountability, and proactive change. Everyone has a limit. We're just waiting to see what yours is. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Clarissa Hightower. Do you have?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening, fellow leaders. In all my years of championing dignity, belonging, and equity, I have never seen the level of dehumanization rise to such high in the community as it has over the past year. In these times, we need leaders who center humanity and who work to ensure our students have a better reality to look forward to. One of those leaders is Dr. Singleton. In light of the departure of Dr. Singleton from her position, I want to make sure you know that the work of equity is still very important to many in this community, including me, because it centers humanity. I am here tonight to highlight some trends and some questions I have for a path forward. In 2020, when I stood up to equity work in department, I understood then what important work I think. Executive-level decision-making power, competent equity leadership in all departments and schools, staff to support the work, policies and procedures that hold us accountable to the work, and the superintendent who supports the work in word and action. Since 2021, I have watched the slow chip away of these things. Three of my four equity toses were cut. My position was dissolved to help create two new executive positions, neither of which center equity in title nor practice. People without a strong equity lens were elevated into executive and chief-level positions with no accountability to strengthen their equity lens. Dr. Singleton's decision-making power was diluted. The affirmative action plan was neglected for years and then passed from the COO to a school principal. Equity updates and board meetings decreased significantly, and there has been an overall deprioritization of the equity work in general. So, my fellow leaders, my questions to you are: is equity still a focus in EPS? If yes, how will you ensure it is elevated and centered as the strategic plan states it should be? What, excuse me, will you backfill Dr. Singleton's position and give it the appropriate level of decision-making power? If not, what will the funds for her salary be used for? What development opportunities will leaders at the school, district, executive, and cabinet levels have to ensure they operate at a distinguished level of proficiency in the area of equity? How will you ensure that the superintendent is embodying and has the resources that she needs to uphold operational expectation OE dash zero for equity? And how will you continue to address the outstanding items from the 2020 equity audit? Please know that I and many other leaders in the community are very willing and able to offer our input, guidance, and support on these inquiries as we are agreeing to be a place where humanity is served, all students are successful, and belong. Thank you all very much. Head into the back to school night at Gila. God bless.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sheena Hardy.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sheena Hardy, parent who is now senior at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School. Oh, sorry. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sheena Hardy, parent who is now senior at Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School. I am also the executive director and parent of, and president, sorry, of the Melanated Network, a community-based organization that works to support students, families, and youth leadership while promoting equity, representation, and access to resources for communities of color. This is now my second time in less than a year standing before you to raise concerns about equity in this district. The last time I was here, I spoke about many of the same issues, and unfortunately, those concerns remain unaddressed today. The Director of Equity and Inclusion has been one of the few consistent supports for families like mine. She has worked hard to address the educational and safety concerns that my child and other parents' children have faced in our schools. Even with her leadership, we have only seen limited resolution. So I have to ask, what can possibly happen now that she is leaving? Why has the district not publicly acknowledged her departure, given the importance of her role in a district where more than half of the students are students of color? Is there a plan to replace her? If not, who will be responsible for ensuring equity remains center in decision-making moving forward? We've watched multiple strong Black female leaders and equity staff leave or be cut from this district in recent years. What steps will be taken to investigate this pattern? And what accountability will be put in place? Families and students of color deserve to know that leadership and building staff reflect the diversity of our schools. What is the district doing to ensure leadership better mirrors the majority of its students, who are students of color? And finally, will this board commit to an equity-focused climate audit of the district office leadership culture? Because unless there is transparency and accountability, staff of color will continue to experience harm, isolation, and departure, and our children will feel those impacts most directly. From the outside, it looks like the district is moving away from its equity-focused strategic plan. I urge you to prove otherwise, not with words, but with action. Thank you. And I will be heading back to Gila, back to school night as well. Have a good night.
Our next speaker is Brittany Lassane.
Yeah, Brittany Lassane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good evening, my name is Brittany Lassane, and I serve as CEO of YWCA Clark County. Our organization works every day with families in this community, many of them the same families served by Evergreen Public Schools. We see firsthand how critical it is for students to experience belonging, representation, and fairness in their schools. With more than half of Evergreen students identifying as students of color, racial equity is essential. But equity does not stop there. Equity means ensuring that students with disabilities receive the supports they need to thrive. It means making sure English language learners and their families have true access to information and opportunities. It means recognizing that LGBTQ+ students deserve to feel safe and affirmed. It means that students living in poverty shouldn't be excluded from experiences or left behind academically because of circumstances outside of their control. And equity is not just about fairness, it's about outcomes. When equity is prioritized, graduation rates rise, achievement gaps close, students feel safer, and more young people leave school ready for college, careers, and community leadership. When equity is sidelined, those gains vanish. The district's ability to deliver on its core mission is undermined. Dr. Singleton's leadership helped keep these commitments visible. Her departure leaves a real gap. When this transition passes without public acknowledgement, it signals to students, families, and staff that equity is optional, and it cannot be optional. I urge the board to take several important steps. One, publicly recognize the importance of this role and the impact of Dr. Singleton's contributions. Two, communicate clearly with families and staff about the district's plan to ensure equity leadership continues at the highest levels. Three, examine why so many strong Black women and equity-focused leaders have left in recent years and take steps to create a culture where staff of color and all staff with marginalized identities feel safe, supported, and retained. Four, commit to leadership and staff that reflect the diversity and needs of your student body across race, gender, language, and ability. Equity is not a side project. It is the foundation for student achievement, family trust, and community partnership. Every student, regardless of race, gender, income, disability, or identity, deserves to see themselves valued in Evergreen schools. If equity disappears from Evergreen's leadership, it will not be the students who have failed this district, it will be this board. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Yi.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you all for the opportunity to share my perspective today. My name is Dr. Sarah Yi, and I serve as an advisor to two student groups in Evergreen Public Schools: Students Advocating for Equity, or SAFE, and the Board's Student Advisory Council, who you work with very closely. I have led and facilitated these two groups for the past two years and am honored to have worked with many incredible EPS students. In my role as an advisor, I've worked to elevate and empower student voices, especially the voices of underserved and marginalized students. This work has been done in partnership with former Legacy High School Administrator Andy Schoonover and my co-advisor for SAFE, Paul Porter. Strengthening these relationships to support our students would not have been possible without the guidance and focused intention of EPS's Director of Student Equity and Family Engagement, Dr. Jamila Singleton. With Dr. Jay's upcoming departure from the district, I have very real concerns about the continuation of equity work in EPS. My concerns are based on the reduction and deprioritization I witnessed the past few years to the Student Equity and Family Engagement Department. I've seen the elimination of all equity-specific instructional coaches, the decision to not fill the two empty roles of Executive Director of Equity and Inclusion and Community Engagement and Enrichment Coordinator, and a reassignment of an administrative assistant. Many of these individuals are BIPOC identifying. I urge the board to consider the impacts on student belonging and success based on these past decisions and the potential of future choices that you have yet to make. This department's role in laying the foundation for student leadership development that highlights student voice is crucial to grounding why and how we as educators serve students and families. The perspectives I hear from students tells a story that requires educators to be equipped to serve in culturally responsive and equitable ways. It's always imperative, and especially now, practices and skills that are, these are skills that are delivered by this department and the resources that they share. Thank you again, and I hope you'll take these concerns into consideration as you navigate a way forward for this department, and I appreciate your time and chance to speak this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rebecca Goldman.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Rebecca Goldman. I'm the parent of two kids, including one preschooler, in the district. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Derek Seitzma, who could not be here tonight. He's a proud special education parent educator, and I strongly agree with the content of his comments. Derek says, "I can't be here in person because I'm working at a track meet at my school. I chose to be there because our students deserve support, also because, like everyone else, I won't be paid until October 14th at extra $50 matters." Last week, Dr. Maloney sent an email to staff speaking about hope, healing, and optimism after the strike. While those words sound comforting, they ring hollow when the actions do not match. It has been said that the district couldn't process spread pay in time for September's cycle, that it was too short a turnaround, and yet, two years ago, when it came to pushing through supplemental contracts for administrators, those were processed on an off-cycle and nothing left. So fast, they cleared before the next board meeting. That shows it wasn't impossible, it just wasn't a priority because it wasn't for you. This isn't the price of doing business, it's punishment for stepping out. That is why so many of us hear these calls for healing and feel they are hollow. The strike was not simply stress and disruption, as it was described. For many of us, it meant choosing between groceries or rent, bills or gas. For some, it was swallowing pride and asking for help. The truth is, relationships are not repaired with platitudes. They are repaired with action, with accountability, with leadership that shows frontline workers are valued just as much as executives. The culpability of the strike has been placed squarely on the classifieds now. But it takes two to tango, and we never wanted this dance. You forced us onto the floor. So here we stand. You say this relationship is not beyond repair, but a relationship is two-sided, and from this side, it feels like irreparable damage has been done. If you truly want to repair it, start with the right tool, accountability, because hope without accountability is just wishful thinking. So yes, let's talk about hope, but let's ground that hope in truth, in action, and justice. Only then can healing begin. To Derek, from me, EPS, all that you do for our kids.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Dunn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bruce Dunn. I've been a teacher in this district for 27 years. My history here goes back even further. My blue-collar parents moved to Vancouver from Towahleton, Oregon, and did so because Evergreen had a solid reputation for being the best. They wanted the best for their kids as they raised their family. My brother, my sister, and I are all graduates of Evergreen Public Schools, and I began as a first grader in this district, and I have spent nearly my entire life connected to these schools as a student, an employee, a community member, a taxpayer, and a parent. And I have three kids who've graduated from Evergreen schools. In the last decade, we endured three contentious strikes. Each time, the school year has started with chaos instead of excitement and optimism. Families are frustrated, employees are disheartened, and the community's trust in the district has eroded. That broken trust is not just between the district and the community, it also exists between employee and employer. And when that relationship is fractured, our students are the ones who ultimately suffer. This year, on the heels of the most recent strike, the Evergreen Education Association and the Evergreen Public Schools will be entering into a bargain for the next CBA. I am more than nervous about how this will go. If we are serious about doing what is best for kids, then we must begin the hard work of repairing the divide between us. That means creating space for honest dialogue, treating one another with respect, never using passive-aggressive communications, and some of the bad faith tactics we have seen in the recent past. And most importantly, publicly acknowledging when wrongs have been made. Healing begins with recognition and ownership. We want our students to begin each school year with joy, not turmoil. We want them to see a community united in their success, not divided by mistrust. And that will only happen if we make rebuilding relationships our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Angie Wathe.
Good evening, board. I am the mom of a graduate from Evergreen High School, and I have a current junior, and I'm also a sped parrot in this district, and I am also the vice president of PSE. I am speaking to you tonight out of pure frustration. So much frustration that I'm not even sure where to start. So here goes. First, I am very disappointed in the school board. Your employees should not have been expected to work for free. We had to fight so hard to get a form, and it still isn't going to fix the problem. We got that after only being on strike for 10 days. We had been asking for a compensation form since March, when negotiations started. Because we have hearts and we wanted nothing bad to happen to our children, we would work. It's not fair to expect your staff to work for free. Now, the lack of disrespect I feel from this school board and other people in this room, just because you're a higher up does not mean you should treat your employees the way you have been. We all put our pants on the same way. Making all the snide remarks in the emails going out, I thought we were moving forward and not backwards. It sure doesn't feel like that to me or any of the other staff. All your communications look backwards, blaming PSE for a 12-day strike. It has been set on the calendar you sent to parents and set again onto the staff email that went out. That email went out on their second day back to school, when everyone was trying to move on. Then we all got that email blaming us again. We could have avoided the strike if you all would have worked with us, if you would have listened to what we really needed. It definitely was not all about money, like you made it seem to be. We are short in schools for ukuru pads and walkie-talkies. Are you guys looking to fix that problem? Because that's not safe for the children and the staff. We offered to meet many days in August, and your negotiation team was not able to. If you would have, then maybe it could have been fixed before school was to even start. You say you care about your staff, you are wrong, and you proved it by withholding people's paychecks. You were trying to prove a point, a point that PSE should not have gone on strike. We had to, there was no choice, as you would not listen to what we needed. Now your employees can't pay their rent, electric bills, car payments, or even buy food for their children. See, we don't make $250,000 a year and have savings we're able to tap into. We live off of our paychecks. We need them to survive, and as I said, it's another lack of disrespect. You had 17 days to get it resolved, plenty of time. You just wanted to put your foot down and show that you were the boss. You had offered secretaries the chance to work while we were on strike, which would have been extra money for them. Why couldn't you have offered payroll, extra hours, if they needed it to produce our checks? I know you don't care, or you would have fixed the problem. You have plenty of time to fix it. Let's hope you can all learn from this. PSE is strong, and our employees are stronger. We will not get bullied anymore by Evergreen School District.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cam Cruz. Cam Cruz.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Cam Cruz, and I'm here tonight as both a mother of two biracial children and as an Evergreen employee. My children have had many wonderful teachers, but very few who looked like them. My daughter graduated from Evergreen School District without ever having a teacher of color. My son, now a junior, has had a couple. Last year, he stood before you and asked what Evergreen was going to do to hire and retain more teachers of color and how the district was protecting those teachers from being disproportionately impacted by budget cuts. I ask you, were his questions heard? Were they truly considered? This is why I'm speaking to you tonight. In a district where over half of our students that look like my babies are students of color, the work of our Equity Department is not symbolic, it's essential. Under the leadership of Dr. Singleton, Clarissa Hightower and the Equity Department, Evergreen began creating systems that made equity real. Students had platforms to lead and speak truth. Families were co-designers of meaningful solutions, like newcomer workshops and IEP resources, and equity was built into the way we made decisions. These were not box-checking conversations, this was transformative work, and Dr. Singleton and her department are at the center of all of it. As a mother, I saw my son feel inspired because he saw leaders who looked like him, who valued his words, and who reflected his lived experiences. That changed how he sees leadership and how he imagines his future. As an educator, I can tell you that both Dr. Singleton and Clarissa Hightower have transformed me. Their brilliance, their perspective, and their systems-thinking reshaped the way I teach, the way I lead, and the way I understand race and education. Dr. Singleton in particularly invested deeply in me, supporting and encouraging me, but also requiring and challenging me to be a better version of myself in service of the students, teachers, and families around me. She balanced grace with high expectations and through that gave me the confidence and the courage to grow not only as an educator, but as a human. Her leadership was never about a single training or resource, it was about creating a culture, a way of thinking, questioning, and acting that made equity inseparable from our daily work. She built systems that pushed us to reflect, tools that helped us act, and spaces where we could both be accountable and supportive. That's the kind of leadership that changes people and changes districts. And now, Dr. Singleton and Clarissa are both gone. Two powerful Black women who changed this district have left. Michael Follen reminds us, no amount of external accountability will be effective in the absence of internal accountability. The culture of shared responsibility for equity, belonging, and deep learning is what Dr. Singleton and her team cultivated here. How will Evergreen continue it without equity leadership? So tonight, I urge you to... So tonight, I urge you to consider, is there a plan to replace this role and continue the essential work? What changes are being made to our hiring practices? And most importantly, what is your plan to carry forward the equity systems Dr. Singleton and the Equity Department created with integrity and urgency? Evergreen's strategic plan promises that every student is welcome, included, and empowered. It promises that inequities will be removed so that every child is prepared for success. Without clear equity leadership, how will we stay true to that promise? What will you say to the more than 50% of our students, who are students of color, and to the families who have worked tirelessly to support this vision? I stand here tonight as a mother, an educator, and a community member, and I'm asking you to show us through your actions that equity is not temporary, not dependent on one or two leaders, but foundational to who Evergreen is and who we strive to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Drug.
Good evening. My name is Dana Drug. I'm a parent, employee, and voter. I'm here to bring attention and advocate for classified staff who are being denied their September pay. For 20 years, I've been an EPS employee. In my role, I assist students and families, access resources and other supports to eliminate barriers inhibiting their success. This includes obtaining food, clothing, holiday needs, and community resources. In the past seven years, I have supported exponentially more staff than during my entire career with Evergreen, and frankly, my entire career working with at-risk youth. Many families are experiencing unemployment, food insecurity, unstable housing, and transportation barriers. Some families are encountering health issues. Others experience systematic poverty. Most are only one paycheck away from catastrophe. My role is to help families disrupt the cycle and meet them where they're at and increase student engagement and achievement. I want to be clear, your EPS community is hurting. None of the PSE staff entered into the strike lightly. In fact, PSE 507 went from apathy to organization in such a short period of time. It shows you how untenable the situation had become. People get louder when they are not heard. Your district bargaining team has refused to pay its employees for September, which is an unfair labor practice and a violation of our contract. This action is deliberate and intentional, causing harm to some of the most marginalized and vulnerable populations. Make no mistake, HR could pay staff at the end of September, others are. Besides mandatory deductions, many staff have voluntary deductions with varying costs. Health insurance coverage is different, based on who is covered and what carrier is utilized. No one employee's check will be the same, and HR personnel will have to go through every single employee's check. More time, energy, and resources will be spent, instead of just paying staff the 12-month spread pay according to contract. How much overtime will this create, and couldn't it have been better spent on students? How is this behavior being kinder than necessary? How does this create healing and foster hope? It was stated by leadership that relationships have not been broken beyond repair. While I do not speak for everyone, I can assure you, many do not believe the statement. Paying staff according to contract would be a good first step to reconciliation. Actions speak louder than words. Evergreen has a problem. The fear staff feel due to the real threat retaliation by district leadership is reinforced by abstaining from paying us in September. How do you suggest we recruit and retain the best and brightest? I no longer refer anyone to Evergreen based on the present culture of toxicity. Again, people get louder when they are not heard. The PSE strike was a collective scream. Why have there been three strikes in a six-year period? What is the common denominator? I've been here long enough to remember when John Dieter refused a pay increase due to budgetary constraints. Your former superintendent had to check if he could forego his increase. There seems to be an evolving pattern of leadership receiving promotions or increases when all other staff are told there is no money. I'm imploring you to fix this grave and intentional harm being inflicted on staff. It is not too late to make this right.
Camille Lohman.
Good evening. Hi, welcome back. Nice to see you all in person today. My name is Camille, and I'm a parent in the district, and I just wanted to share some numbers. 31,000, the haunting number I know the board is very tired of hearing about, the amount given to the four staff supplemental bonuses during the 2023 strike, days before a contract had even been reached with the union. 22, the number of districts across the state that I've contacted about supplemental contracts for district bargaining team members. Four of those 22 districts did compensate their bargaining team, but only after a contract had been reached, and all had a payroll employee present or a documented protocol to track the additional time, unlike Evergreen. Zero of these four districts provided compensation of more than 2,500 each. Five, the number of board members who I have already presented all of this information to in a formal setting. Three, at least, labor partners in the district who have and/or are still currently in repeated contentious negotiations with the district. Four, the number of versions of an email, read-for-ed email version four, that the district paid their law firm to write and then have the previous superintendent send to me. Side note, fiscally strange choice to spend thousands of dollars in legal fees just to attempt to invalidate the evidence I shared, when the entire email response did not reflect anything I had presented, and then not even scrub the metadata on the PDF of the letter. Three, the number of times I've come across documentation, as acquired through public records requests, of the principals submitting and resubmitting a grievance against the chief operations officer without it ever actually being properly or effectively addressed. 150, the amount the district is paying per hour for a law firm just to redact documents for public records. $150 an hour just to redact documents. 10,000, the amount the district paid a workplace investigator to conduct an investigation of the previous superintendent, Mike Merlino, based on accusations made by chief operations officer without any written or documented investigation report from the investigator. 29,000, the amount paid to that same workplace investigator to conduct an investigation of a grievance against the chief operations officer, this time magically with an actual, real-life investigation report. Three, the number of amazing, impactful, intelligent, empowering Black women in leadership positions who brought an equitable and inclusive focus and intentionally fostered community who have then resigned from their positions at this district in just the last three years, and seemingly zero red flags or questions from the district or board about why. Five, mindset the superintendent refers to all the time but has shown no interest in following herself. Hundreds, not hyperbolically, pages of documents of evidence to back up all of these numbers presented. One, email you have all received today containing letters of concern in a matter of public trust of a public officer or employee that have also already been submitted and hand-delivered to the PA's office, with many more coming your way.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle Helm.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. All right. Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Maloney. My name's Kyle. I'm a former student of Evergreen Public Schools. I went to Ellsworth, Crestline, Y East, and Mountain View. I'm currently an employee of the district, and I reside within district boundaries. I really like it here. I'm here tonight to advocate for and share the importance of our Student Equity and Family Engagement Department. As I speak, I'm going to use the word "we" a lot, because I feel it's important to recognize the collective work we've done. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that that collective work happened because of the incredible leaders we've had in the Student Equity and Family Engagement Department, including Clarissa Hightower, Dr. Jamila Singleton, Charlotte Latte, Ashley Cooper, Chris Akaresi, and Shannon Shamba. Since the department began, we developed a vision and a plan, the strategic plan, for the future of Evergreen Public Schools as a community of educators, caregivers, and students that is equity-centered. I am proud of the work we've done to ensure a future where each student belongs and all students succeed. And each action we take is a step toward that future. We gave the strategic plan for family and community engagement life by identifying specific guidelines to support the work of staff across the district as they interact with and partner with families. I'm proud of the work we've done so that we can serve families better, and we're using it daily at my school right now. We've raised up the voices and experiences of students in our community who have shown us the way toward a better, more empowering, and more affirming education in our schools. I'm proud of the work we've done so that we can hear students better. I myself have grown as a leader, communicator, and relator with the mentorship and partnership of the department's leaders and specialists. I am proud of the person and leader I am becoming because of them. We could not have done these things, and it will be difficult to continue them without our Student Equity and Family Engagement Department. I believe in the power of this work to create a culture of responsibility, to eliminating the predictability of outcomes by demographic group, to honoring the dignity and multiple identities of each human in our community, and to continuously improving our services by mitigating or eliminating obstacles to fuller participation in them, especially for those with historically marginalized identities, including Black, Brown, and Indigenous people of color, students who identify as LGBTQ+, multilingual learners, students from low-income families, immigrants, and students of immigrants, and students with disabilities. This work requires a robust Student Equity and Family Engagement Department now and in the future. So I ask this board and this superintendent to utilize their influence, that is, their leadership, to prioritize it by filling the director position, by creating and communicating a transition plan for the department, and by investigating why our Black women leaders leave by choice and/or policy impacts. Let's keep doing work we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Minnie Trooper Cooper.
Good evening. Good evening. I too am glad to see you again. Before we TA'd the PSE contract, I was asked to come here and apologize for any untruths or misconceptions that were told by me during our strike. I unfortunately didn't do those things and have no apology to give. What I did come here tonight for was to point out the huge disservice that is being done to your employees by you, your superintendent, and your COO. You have made a choice to continue to message and place blame on the strike to us solely, your classified employees, instead of owning your part and beginning to try and heal the harm that has occurred. You could all learn a lot from VPS. Their messaging was amazing. You made the choice to not pay the classified staff in accordance with labor law and with our collective bargaining agreement. You instead want to force your lowest-paid employees to fall deeper into poverty. For what? For power, for control, or for punishment? You say you can't pay us, but in fact, you are choosing not to. You are choosing to create a whole new payroll just for spite. We offered to take last year's pay for one month to make less work for your payroll department and allow you to make up the difference in retro pay. It was denied. Many different solutions were offered that night to no avail. That is harmful. That doesn't rebuild or restore trust. Many have asked, where do we go from here? How do we continue to work for an employer who has so little regard for our difficult jobs? I have no answer for them. Those answers lie with each of you. How do you intend to heal these wounds? How do you intend to repair our lack of trust? Let's not forget that many of these employees are also parents of your students, taxpayers in your district, voters who elect you, or someone who will better serve their needs and the community needs as well. Yes, we voted to go on strike. Yes, we chose to not work without a contract like we had three years previously, because it didn't serve us to do so. And yes, we demanded better for ourselves and for each other. Make no mistake, we own our part of this. But we would really like for you to take some accountability as well, for the part you played in the strike. I would also like to know how many of these strikes we're going to need to have before you realize we have a real problem. Yes, where and how we move on from here in these decisions are your choice. We, your classified employees, are watching. Our fellow union partners are watching, and so is your student body and their families. Levy's bonds and elections may depend on how you choose to respond. I sincerely hope you choose to finally do the right thing by all of us, and I would be more than happy to meet with any of you at any time to explain our position. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chrissy Foster. Good evening.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Chrissy Foster, and I'm a math teacher at Mountain View High School. I'm going to start with a poem that has been on my mind this week. I'd like to invite everybody in the room, or virtually, to just settle their feet on the floor if they'd like to join and take a deep breath with me. "Touched by an Angel," by Maya Angelou. We, unaccustomed to courage, exiles from delight, live coiled in shells of loneliness, until love leaves its high, holy temple and comes into our sight to liberate us into life. Love arrives, and in its train come ecstasies, old memories of pleasure, ancient histories of pain. Yet if we are bold, love strikes away the chains of fear from our souls. We are weaned from our timidity in the flush of love's light. We dare be brave, and suddenly we see that love costs all we are and will ever be. Yet it is only love which sets us free. In light of that poem, I ask that we use our courage and our love for one another, for our students and their families, and for our collective futures to not only ensure the filling of the role of director of Student Equity and Family Engagement as Dr. Singleton moves into her new role elsewhere, but to expand the department back to our 2021 numbers before the restructuring that concealed the losses. I also ask that we consider how essential affinity groups and their organization are right now for students, that we reconsider letting go of the courageous conversations about race curriculum and training for every new staff member, that we continue to create opportunities for student leaders in a myriad of ways, following the pattern of so many incredible Black and African-American leaders and educators who have come through this system and left us, by choice or not. I hope that someday, we will all grow individually and as a system enough to deserve their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Rosa.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Rosa, and I'm the instructional coach at Emerald Elementary School. And I'm here tonight to speak to the transformative impact that the Student Equity and Family Engagement Department has had on me, on my practice, and in turn, on the teachers and students that I work with. I'm concerned about the future of this department, given the departure of its director, ongoing budget concerns, and our national political climate. I want to speak tonight from my personal, local, and immediate experience. At Emerald, our vision is to be a place where children and adults come to thrive. Our jobs as educators is to notice trends and patterns, name what we see, and change our practice so that we will, in fact, help all members of our community thrive. The following is a list of the tools, resources, and support that have been provided by the Equity Department that has really helped the children and adults at my school thrive. First, our work with courageous conversations about race. This process has helped me and my staff notice and name the limiting beliefs we've held and the bias systems that we've worked within. We have since made efforts to change and expand our worldviews. Disaggregating data has also helped us notice and name trends and patterns in certain subsets of students that we would not see if looking at the data as a whole. In response, we can now target our support to meet their unique needs. Equity transformation cycles, namely empathy interviews, have been transformational in the practice of the teachers at Emerald. In this process, students themselves name what they need, and they work with their teacher to make those changes. As a result, our teachers have noticed an increase in trust and connection with their students. Their students feel seen, they feel valued, and they feel cared for. As a leader in a new school, I have supported the design of many systems and structures. The EPS equity lens has helped me facilitate their creation, giving me the tools to notice and name who needs to be at the table, who is being impacted by our decisions, and work together to think about and plan for the potential and unintended consequences. I was excited to hear Dr. Singleton talk about our equity efforts for this year at our August leadership meeting. I was proud that our district was staying the course and not being intimidated by attacks on this work. While I'm happy for Dr. Singleton in starting her new and exciting next chapter, I do have concerns that the work will leave with her. I would like to end with a call to action. I implore you to rehire for this position in order to ensure that equity isn't deprioritized and instead remains centered in our strategic plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Our next speaker is Shemea Potter.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Catherine Furtick, and my four children graduated through EPS. The most recent Superintendent email entailing the mindsets and goals for the following year brought about, as expected, many heated responses, and from what I've witnessed in the last month alone, they're justified. I'll share a few. I assume positive intent when someone has a demonstrated history of positive intent. Assuming positive intent also requires relationship, which doesn't work well with such extreme power dynamics, and since we have seen now, since during this last strike atmosphere, anything but the example of assuming positive intent in the district's public communication, making it very difficult to have a positive relationship. The be kinder than necessary mindset also hit a collective nerve. Many are shocked our Superintendent is still trying to espouse this concept, considering how many have brought up with proof that her actions and words and those of leadership have not been kinder than necessary, but have indeed harmed. Measuring twice, cutting once? Once again, I'm going to ask, when are we going to start incentivizing retention of our student-facing positions instead of the sole focus on executives? Spending is a keen indicator of priorities. What will be done to prevent future strikes and address what led to the last three? What will be done to increase retention of the student-supporting positions? Staying the course, changing nothing regarding the who and how in negotiating, and how you as leadership define good faith bargaining, is not a system that has served our students or the staff teaching and supporting them. Is it systems that serve everyone or only those in power? Another focus in the email is on healing and ironically nurturing relationships. I'm sure you've all considered individually and even modeled to your own children to some degree what it means to repair harm. We teach our children that an apology doesn't mean much without an effort to change the hurtful behavior, that we can't just skip over the necessary work, and that it also takes time and consistency to repair trust. There were three Board workshops on restorative justice addressing these concepts. I'm curious what your own takeaways were from those workshops. They gave me a great deal to think about and even spurred conversation with some of you and myself. We cannot skip to this is what I want to see while acknowledging nothing and taking no accountability. There's no skips, no shortcuts. So in all of this, what is being modeled for our students? We want to raise leaders. Are we leading by the example of do as we say, not as we do? Your employees did hold out hope and optimism that they would be respected and looked out for, since after all, our schools couldn't safely or effectively be run without them, they were told. They are struggling to feel this optimism now. There are no shortcuts to repairing harm. You have to put in the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shemea Potter.
She is sick kiddo. She's a sick kiddo.
Okay, thank you.
Evening, Board and Superintendent. Glad to see you all here in person. My name's Jacob Smith, and I'll probably say it over and over again, I'm on this year's ballot for Evergreen School Board. I'm a bit concerned about stuff I heard from the previous meeting, especially since the PSC contract has been a long and contentious process. I feel we need to learn how to be civil about the issues and be professional, practical, and principled in our discussions. And I apologize for the negative emails you have received over the last few weeks, but I'm thankful the Evergreen kids are back in school. However, the way things are handled is a concern to me. Is it worth the price to pay to get these kids back in school? I have heard the rule, growing up through Silver Star Elementary, treat others the way you want to be treated. When I hear a comment that's racial being said, especially as somebody who has a niece and nephew with Asian great-grandparents, whose first friend was Asian at Silver Star, and someone whose cousin has a biracial child, how does that comment help our district? How is that kinder than necessary in creating services that serve and to be culturally responsive? I want to reiterate this phrase, principled, professional, and practical, which I brought last month. How does turning on the sprinklers for a long duration when states such as California have a water shortage or even countries with a drought? We take water rights here for granted. Is that principled, professional, and practical? There are things we take for granted. Do you know how much water is wasted on that? It's around 1,800 to 3,000 gallons, depending on factors such as gallons per minute and time, along with how many sprinklers we have at once, and that is all I have for you today.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello. My name is James Watson Hughes. I've been a school bus driver in this district for almost five years. It's hard to stand up here and give a three-minute speech because there's so much to say and not nearly enough of it would fit. If I had to boil it all down to one word, I would have to use the word crazy. The start of this year has been crazy. The fact that so many people came to this Board to tell you that they couldn't survive off of what they're being paid here, and their immediate response was to say, if you think paying your bills is hard now, wait until we withhold your September paychecks, is crazy. One of the big things that we fought for in this contract is that every minute worked is a minute paid. Yet, the day of the ratification vote, every single school bus driver in the district received an email inviting them to come and prepare for the next day, find out what the changes to our routes were, with the reminder at the end that this is uncompensated The idea that an officer of the school district could treat the employees with the disrespect that we saw this negotiation cycle is crazy. My father is a business owner, and he taught me one thing about business, is that if you take care of your people, your people will take care of you. The administration in the Evergreen School District doesn't take care of its people. When you explicitly tell employees that you don't care about retention as long as you can keep hiring new people, well, I have news for you. We are understaffed in every building and every classification every day of the year. My job isn't glamorous. I'm a school bus driver. I have to be able to pat my head, rub my belly, play hacky sack, and hold a conversation all at the same time. I grew up in this community. I went to Sifton to Frontier. I graduated from Heritage. I know the roads here better than probably anyone in this room. Yet, when it comes to retaining drivers like me, you don't care. Every new driver we train is a risk. Every seasoned driver that we lose to another district is a tragedy, and the same can be said for every worker in every other classification. There is one other job that we can't seem to retain in this district, and that is the To you, I would urge, do your research, make your own decisions here. If you rely on the management that has made the mistakes for the past 10 years, you're only doomed to repeat the mistakes that they made. I know why I was out there holding that line. Do you know why you were in here holding yours? Because unless something changes in the leadership and negotiations, we can all expect more crazy years to come.
Our next speaker is Bob Friedland.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Evergreen School Board. My name is Bob Friedland, and I'm a volunteer member of the Clark County Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. I would describe myself as an older retired white man with curly gray hair, and I wear glasses. Attending with me is Angela Gomez, who is part of the professional staff within the Department of Community Services of Clark County. The Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board is charged with advising the Clark County councilors on issues and services related to developmental disabilities throughout Clark County. This October will be Disability Employment Awareness Month nationwide. As part of this celebration, the Advisory Board will be celebrating Clark County's 25th year of our Disability Employment Awareness Awards, with our theme this year of community, inclusion, and contribution. This celebration and award ceremony reflects the important role people with disabilities play in workforce diversity. Many of the nominees and award winners are former students from Evergreen Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring the local employers, employees, and employment agencies and professionals for their outstanding commitment to employment for all. Our very festive in-person event will be held on Wednesday, October 8th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Clark College in Geyser Hall, located at 1933 Fort Vancouver Way. The event will also be livestreamed and recorded on CVTV for those who prefer to watch remotely. This is a free public event. For registration information, we have forwarded to Lori Stroll our information, but feel free to call 564-397-2130 if you have any other questions. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening. The next item on our agenda is our Board Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Director Perkins moves that we adopt our Board Consent Agenda as presented, seconded by Director Boconegra, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Our next item is our Superintendent Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda.
Second.
Director Boconegra moves that we approve our Superintendent Consent Agenda, seconded by Director Wilson, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Good evening, President Weatherspoon and members of the Board. I have a Superintendent's Report that I prepared in advance of this evening that I believe will answer actually some of the questions and some of the concerns that were raised during public comment tonight. But first, I'm going to start with school has started, and we're very, very excited about that. And I am confident in our school principals and associate principals, knowing that they have ensured that students and staff are welcomed back to school and they're focused on the main thing, which is student achievement. I know our students and staff can be successful because of the systems we have in place to serve schools and to ensure that our learning environments are conducive to teaching and learning. At ASC, I'm confident that every department has leadership that we can count on, and every department includes staff who are committed to excellence. In other departments across the district, I know we have leadership and committed staff who are serving lunches, driving buses, providing maintenance of facilities, grounds, et cetera, and the list goes on. They all take special effort, and they support staff and student success. I believe in Evergreen Public Schools. I love serving as Superintendent of EPS, and it's because when the work needs to be done, people show up. They put differences aside, and they step up for kids and families. I am grateful for each and every employee, and I am proud of our students and our families. We are in our second full week of school, and I had the opportunity to start the first day of school with a bus ride out York and Burton Elementary School routes, had opportunities to visit other schools in the last couple of weeks, and attend our football games this last Friday. Where I'd like to point out, Heritage Timberwolves are now 3-0, and so it was a very exciting end to that game, went into overtime. And this morning, I actually had an opportunity to go out and visit and walk through and meet our maintenance staff warehouse, out to the records rooms, the print shop departments, where amazing work is occurring every single day in support of our schools and our students. This August, even though it seems a little while ago, I shared with all the staff my goals for this school year, and they still ring true, and it's what we're going for. Not only the five priority goals based on the foundations within our strategic plan, we have those, but two overarching goals that we focus our work this school year. The two are creating hope and increasing student achievement. As community members, parents, staff, teachers, and educational leaders, it is incredibly important for us to remember that we have immense power to change and create the environment we want to live in and be part of. We either choose to plant seeds of doubt through negative words, social media, actions, or we can choose to plant seeds of hope through our words, social media, and our choices of actions. We want an environment where belonging for each and success for all can be attained, we must actively engage in planting those seeds of hope and nurturing hope within ourselves and others. We need to live in those five mindsets. Be kinder than necessary because everyone is fighting battles we cannot see and may not understand. We need to assume positive intent, especially when misunderstandings occur. Measuring twice, cutting once? We do need to take the time to get it right and not rush to judgment. Creating systems that serve because our policies must lift up, not limit. And be culturally responsive leaders, honoring the lived experiences and voices of all in our community. I will be continuing my chats with Christine for staff, connect with Christine for administrators, coffee and conversations, you're hearing a connection here, with Christine for parents, and meetings with our BIPOC and other community-based organization leaders. Our first meeting for this year coming up is October 9th. Helping us become better culturally responsive leadership has been Dr. Jamila Singleton. I want to personally and publicly acknowledge the work and the contributions that Dr. Singleton has made in this district, and most importantly, to our students. Dr. Jamila Singleton, Director of Student Equity and Family Engagement, has accepted a new position at a local charter school. I want to thank her, and I want to wish her the very best in her future endeavors. She leaves big shoes to fill. With her departure, I know there's been questions about how we will ensure the continued progress of this department and this important work. Student Equity and Family Engagement staff, along with TLE leadership and school leaders, will continue to focus on removing barriers, elevating student voice, and partnering with families so that all students, especially those furthest from educational justice, are supported and successful. At Dr. Singleton's suggestion, we will not be posting a job for the Director position at this time, but we will reconfigure during this transition time how equity work is going to be led and implemented in EPS this school year. In an effort to further our commitment to equity and inclusive education, we are reinvesting the resources there into positions that will make actionable the work that has been envisioned and initiated by our outgoing Director, Dr. Singleton. Right now, we must move this work forward, so we are posting a specialist position to interact directly with students and staff on a daily basis in our schools and in our classrooms. This specialist will support the district's commitment to equity and inclusive education by providing training, facilitation, mentoring, and coaching to colleagues and peers. This role will focus on advancing racial equity, anti-bias education, culturally responsive practices, and amplifying student voice. Through individualized coaching, small group guidance, and department-level professional learning, the specialists we hire will help staff integrate student perspectives into decision-making, build capacity, promote equitable practices, and foster inclusive, student-centered learning environments across the district. This is important work that will continue. The work Dr. Singleton did last year with the Family Engagement Foundation of the Strategic Plan is continuing with eight schools piloting the work that came out of the Family Engagement meetings this last year. We anticipate a full implementation of the Family Engagement Committee's work by the 26, 27 school year. Since Dr. Fox brings us TLE Updates, which stands for Teaching, Learning, and Equity, at each of our Board meetings, we can look forward to learning more about the transition in this department over the next few months and how we're supporting and continuing the great work and the necessary work and important work that we have within equity. Our goal of increasing student achievement is multifaceted and complex, but we are dedicated to making this happen. We have a committed, caring staff who are working very hard to help each child be successful. But when we look at our overall achievement as measured by this date, we aren't making the gains we want or expect for how hard our staff is working. the gains we want or expect for how hard our staff is working. So we're asking ourselves, what evidence of impact can we identify as a result of our work? This question is guiding us this year so that we can collect data around what is working and what is not working, so we can refocus our time and resources to make a positive difference for our students, in particular, our students' achievement. Tonight, you will hear from Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Brian Fox, and two members of the Teaching, Learning, and Equity Department about work they are doing to improve student outcomes. Thank you, and that concludes my superintendent report.
I just wanted to say that the board is very sad to see Dr. Singleton go. The work she did for the community foundation pillar work was just phenomenal in the way it brought together community and our staff, and it was a space in our building that we haven't seen in a long time. And I'm happy to hear that it's being rolled out to use at eight schools?
Yes.
Okay. So to be in the same model. So that's wonderful, and I'd like to make sure that the board members get a chance to sort of go out to those schools and be a part of that, if possible. The next item on our agenda is our TLE Report. Dr. Fox?
Good evening, President Weatherspoon, members of the board. I'm waiting for the slides to show up, hoping they'll be there soon. I'm always eager to share with you an update from Teaching and Learning and Equity, and tonight is no exception, the first update of the 25, 26 school year. As you know, TLE is made up of several departments working collaboratively to support schools and increase student achievement. And you can see on this slide that TLE includes eight departments: college, career, and technical education, curriculum and instruction, instruction and leadership, multilingual learners, school improvement and accountability, special education, student equity and family engagement, and student services. This year, we've improved our internet presence with a TLE landing page on the district's website, and I'm going to take the time right now to link up here, or use this link that's on this slide to show you what it looks like. This is a new landing page on the district's website devoted to TLE. To learn more about each department, you just scroll down, and it's designed to look similar to our district's homepage in that down below are a number of pictures with links to each of these eight departments which make up TLE. Here you'll see, let's for example, look at curriculum instruction. You'll see the director of the department, a brief overview of the work being done in that department, and a few department projects or programs are highlighted, three at the bottom, keeping it simple for each of the departments. And then several of our departments have created more elaborate and more detailed webpages, and they will have links like Tilly Myers done down here for her department in CNI, Curriculum Instruction. And while much of this is basic information which you may already know, I'm pleased with the way that TLE is now represented on the district website, as a team of people working collaboratively to create systems that serve students, schools, and families. I'm going to go back to our slide here and point out and actually restate what our superintendent noted. As we work to meet the goals of the District Improvement Plan, TLE directors and staff are being asked by me and leadership, what evidence of impact can we identify as a result of our work? This year, TLE Updates at your Board of Directors meetings will include a focus on our answers to this question. We want to ensure that our actions and work are intentionally aligned with the District Improvement Plan and that our efforts are actually having impact. Therefore, this evening, you will hear from Dr. Heather Fowler, Executive Director of Programs and School Performance. She will talk with you about our efforts to create greater system-wide coherence through strategic coordination of professional development across the district. And this presentation will be followed by Director of Career, College, and Technical Education, Kim Burhow. Staff in CCTE provide focus and support to ensure each student has a high school and beyond plan in place, which is a graduation requirement. Backwards planning for this means that we must offer courses for over 12,000 high school students to choose from in order to earn the 24 credits necessary to graduate with a diploma. Helping students choose from over 300 courses and establish their schedule each semester is a process we call forecasting. No one understands this process better than Kim. She will be providing an overview of the forecasting process we have in place, one, I might add, which is used as an example across the state of Washington. Incidentally, for your information, each of these presentations tonight fall under Operations Expectation, or OE11 instructional programs. First, I'll ask Dr. Fowler to come to the podium.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and Board of Directors. Aesop's fable, The Tortoise and the Hare, reminds us that slow and steady wins the race, a lesson that feels especially relevant as we begin this school year. The story speaks to patience and persistence, and our own experience confirms its truth. Rapid, constant change hasn't produced the lasting growth our students deserve, and holding on to outdated practices hasn't served them either. That's why we are committing to a more deliberate and intentional path forward. Our One District, One Direction professional development process is rooted in our core values of equity and inclusion. It is designed to ensure equity is part of every learning experience, building lasting capacity, and to design inclusive opportunities across all departments and roles. Centered on creating systems that serve by evaluating existing systems, the plan champions shared coherence over scattered initiatives and celebrates collaboration over working in isolation, reminding us that we build the future our students deserve when we work together. We start by narrowing our focus and taking time to pause and gain a deeper understanding of what we are currently doing and how it aligns with Dr. Maloney's priority goals. Progress towards student success comes from purposeful actions and intentional work, and this is the driving force behind this approach to district-level professional development. In this context, professional development, most often referred to as PD, refers to the ongoing process by which staff acquire new knowledge, skills, and training. In TLE, we plan three broad areas of PD. The first is district-level PD, which is focused on system-wide initiatives and leadership development. We also conduct department or content-specific PD that furthers learning in subject matter, pedagogy, or content-specific PD, oh, excuse me, or collaborative practices. And we also conduct paraeducator PD, where we provide support aligned with instructional and behavioral supports. Designers of learning experiences are asked to identify how they are explicitly incorporating equity-focused principles into their professional development. These equity-focused principles are culturally responsive practices, multilingual supports, inclusive environments, and strategies to disrupt disproportionalsities, and the expectation is that at least one is threaded through every learning experience we provide. To ensure the plan remains sustainable, technical guidelines are put in place. No more than 35 substitutes may be requested for release time on any given day, and no substitutes are allowed on Mondays or Fridays, which are historically the highest absentee rate days. It also allows us to create a centralized year-long calendar to coordinate offerings and avoid scheduling conflicts. The calendar also ensures transparency and allows departments to align their efforts while avoiding duplication of effort. Though it is still early in its implementation, this process has already made it clear for every department to see how their efforts connect to the larger success of our district. It's a reminder that our work is in service of student success and that collaboration and coherence will get us there, not scattered initiatives or isolated efforts. As we focus on building strong foundations for our students, it's essential that we maintain our commitment to opportunities that shape their futures. To dive deeper into how we will plan for and support students in forecasting, I would like to vie up Kim Burhow, Director of College, Career, and Technical Education. Whether it's academic acceleration, new course proposals, or navigating the statewide platform for high school and beyond planning, Kim is the person who knows the ins and outs of forecasting and credits. Recognized as a leader across Washington, Kim served on the state's High School and Beyond Advisory Council and played a key role in the statewide implementation of School Links, ensuring every high school student has access to this planning tool. Tonight, she will walk you through the fundamentals of forecasting, explaining how student choices shape the master schedule, while some classes run, while some classes don't, and how student voice continues to influence these decisions year after year. Kim?
Thank you, Heather. All right. Good evening, President Weatherspoon and members of the board. As you heard, I am here tonight to share a bit about our district forecasting process. So last spring, the Board of Directors heard from several students and community members regarding changes in theater courses, offerings at some of the high schools. For students not being able to take a class they're excited about is both disappointing and frustrating, and for administrators, having to make those decisions to leave that students, leaving them feeling let down is also frustrating and disappointing. So master schedule and course offerings are ultimately shaped through student choice, through our student-centered scheduling process. Yet, kind of much like core principle of economics, it's really just supply and demand. In this case, the supply is the 356 approved high school courses in our course catalog, while the demand comes from the forecasting choices that our students make, choices that directly influence the course, which courses appear in the school's schedule, and which I'm going to go through tonight. Planning for this year's forecasting actually started last spring. In a district our size, it takes a lot of planning and a whole team of people to ensure that we have a course catalog that is aligned across our district and ready for students come this February. So on this slide, you'll see that I've linked the timeline for you and that we use throughout the fall. As a team manages forecasting for the more than 12,000 students, grades six through 12, the process requires collaboration across TLE, building principals, career guidance specialists, counselors, registrars, and our district's student information services team. One name you're going to see a lot on that list is Bobby Arnold. Bobby, you want to wave back there? Thank you. Bobby is our CCTE specialist and is a champion of student choice and also known statewide for her knowledge around high school and beyond planning, and we are fortunate to have her expertise on our team. The career guidance specialists start the forecasting process in the fall by working with students on their high school and beyond plan, which is a graduation requirement. In the School Links platform, the students identify their interests, and they get to explore career pathways. They consider what they're going to do after graduation and envision what steps they're going to be taking, that are needing to take to make these plans a reality. Students then look at their four-year plan of high school and begin to select courses, which is what's shown here, that interest them or will help them achieve those goals after graduation. They can select these classes beginning in the fall, during the fall, and can adjust them at any time throughout, and through this course planner, through the School Links course planner. So this year, the high school forecasting window opens February 9th and will run through March 20th. Each year, the evergreenps.org website, they run a banner across Announcing Forecasting with a link to this main forecasting webpage. The site has many resources, dates, recorded presentations for each grade level with information for students and families and in multiple languages. I've also linked a document here that, put together by our career guidance team, a prior year forecasting activities in each school, so you can see what happens in the schools. During the forecasting window, students are scheduled for two days to work with counselors through their core classes typically, to submit their choices for the following year. And as I mentioned before, this is done through the School Links platform, course planner, where students choose a full schedule for the year plus four alternatives, which is really important, and they can make those, they can make changes until they submit or lock their schedule. They can update their choice after submitting by going to the career center or to their counselor until March 20th. After March 20th, forecasting stops in School Links and then pretty much becomes like a game of Tetris, because the forecasting moves into Skyward, and from their principals, balanced schedules based on student requests, staffing FTE, district priorities. And when a class doesn't reach a minimum enrollment threshold, it may be collapsed, and students are placed in one of their identified alternatives. Consistent monitoring of class sizes and adjusting as necessary ensure that we're using funds efficiently while still providing students with a variety of options. So throughout this process, our focus is on honoring student choice as much as possible while aligning staff and resources. So the forecasting process is just really how we match the interests, students' interests with teacher assignments and the electives, and again, just much like the marketplace, it is shaped by supply and demand. Thank you.
I'd like to go back to this slide, and I'd like to point out, I'm going to go to the link here, which I already had up here for you, but I'd like to point out these three stories, and you can see that forecasting is the first here on the left. And it includes some of the information that Kim just shared with you this evening. The TLE Update sometimes includes a topic that comes to me from you, a question that you've brought up or that our community has raised, and this is an example of that. Forecasting was a concern in the spring. Wanted to make sure that there was not only a presentation or sharing with you tonight of the process, but now also a page, I wonder if I can go there as well, on forecasting that includes some of the details that Kim shared, so you don't have to be frantically taking notes and writing down that February is when forecasting starts, but you can go here now as a place to be reminded of some of those details. A review or a summary of our TLE Updates is also provided in the monthly TLE newsletter that goes out to all of our EPS leadership, to all people here in this building at ASC, to all of our secretaries at each of the schools, and you also receive that. Our hope is that then, again, you don't have to take notes, you have a place where you can go back and reference some of the details that you had presented for you. Our hope is that some of the topics shared with you during board meetings can be featured on the website, in that newsletter, and referenced as needed. We hope that you and others will find this helpful. This effort falls under Operational Expectations 3, 8, and 9, which focus on community stakeholders, communication with the board, and communicating with the public. Finally, I'd like to let you know what we have planned for your next meeting. At your next meeting on October 14th, the TLE Update will include an overview of the District Improvement Plan and a presentation on inclusive schools in EPS. This concludes TLE Update.
I just wanted to say thank you, Kim. That was really helpful.
I agree. I did have a question. The platform School Links, is that the high school and beyond platform, or is that a different platform?
So, School Links is the high school and beyond planning platform. It replaced It replaced Zello. We used to have Zello. In 2023, 24, the legislature asked OSPI to go out and find a vendor. And then they are, were, with the intention that they wanted a statewide platform. And so they, in May of 2024, identified SchoolLinks. We moved a year early. And then this year, in rural pilot district. And so this year, about half the state is running on SchoolLinks. And then the other half, school districts had a choice of this year or next year to move to SchoolLinks. But the entire state will be on SchoolLinks.
Right. I can remember advocating for exactly that with the legislature a number of years ago. And it's really heartening to see that come to life.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask a question on, or a clarification on forecasting? Which really eye-opening, how much thought and process has to go into it. And, you know, when we have as many students that we do and as many offerings, which is fantastic. But one of the things and one of the questions we get from time to time is why don't we always offer the same classes at all the high schools? And so this explained a lot of it, but a lot of it's about staffing and expertise.
And facilities.
And facility. And then also the interest of students at that particular school.
Exactly.
It's all into that mix.
Right. And, and we try, for the most part, as schools across, you'll notice in the course catalog which schools offer. Most often, I would say, you'll see that all schools, all high schools, for instance, will offer a course. But if they don't have the student interest, then it gets collapsed because you just don't have enough interest to run it. And unfortunate, it's unfortunate. But that's how it is.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I've been patiently waiting for OSPI to update their report card for spring of 2025. And it came out recently. And surprised, though, one of the metrics wasn't there. That's usually there, the students on track for college and learning without needing remedial classes. And, you know, I've got to call into them. I haven't heard back yet, but I'm just trying to compare apples to apples for where, where we're at currently. And yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I get that information.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm looking at Heather because I think that's also falls under your, as well. So some of those ones just like, I think a little bit.
Yeah, it's always been there, but this time around, they omitted it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda are board comments. Anyone want to go and get started?
I'll just quickly say that I want to thank Dr. Singleton for her work that she did with her student groups. Kind of an update from our student reps is that President Weatherspoon and myself will be meeting with them the first week of October to get them started, which is super exciting. We haven't been able to coordinate their very busy schedules with ours. And so now that school has started, we'll get them on board. But she did an incredible amount of work with both those groups. And as Dr. Yee said earlier, that we're going to hope to continue that work and make sure that we have a path forward for that because we've seen some really emergent leaders come from both of those groups. And so it's exciting to see that continue.
I have a number of things I want to say. And the first thing is to thank you, Dr. Maloney, for bringing Dr. Singleton some flowers. I really appreciated that. I think of her as a bright light. She has taught me and guided me in equity matters in such a kind and empathetic and compassionate way that I just never forgot it. She was part of the public input for Operational Expectations Zero, our equity policy. She advised us on language and made it more inclusive and more compassionate than it otherwise would have been without her input. And I wanted to publicly thank her for that work so many years ago, which persists and remains an operative operational expectation of this board upon this district. The fact that it's worded as instructions to the superintendent may have led some people to believe that only the superintendent is responsible for this policy, when my belief is every person working in the schools is responsible for achieving that expectation. And I'm glad to hear from Dr. Fox and the others about the ongoing work to do so and the centering of equity there. As the draft author with Director Rogers on our equity policies, I thought it'd be a good idea to just briefly go over Results Policy 3, which is our equity results policy in which we direct that students will recognize, value, and celebrate cultural, ethnic, and other diversities. They will be considerate and compassionate towards others. They will discuss and engage in controversies and uncomfortable issues with empathy, civility, compassion, and dignity. They will demonstrate cultural awareness and competency in their interactions with others. They will apply principles of equality and equity in their roles as students and student leaders. They will have equitable access to educational resources, experiences supportive and barrier-free learning environment, and create and share perspectives stemming from their unique identities, including their own racial, cultural, ethnic, and family identities. When we wrote the draft of this policy, we placed considerable focus on making sure that the policy describes equity as we define it, rather than any other entity. We steered clear of incendiary language in this, in that work in order to emphasize the fact that the focus of this is on the students and not on whatever political or other social pressures might be out there. And I want to note that it is impossible to achieve this with students unless all the adults in the system also are demonstrating these characteristics and are as sensitive. So, you know, the, the public comments today about the apparent loss of equity because people of color have left or, or been cut from positions in the Administrative Service Center and elsewhere, that really hits my heart. Because of the way the Dr. Singleton's wisdom influenced me and that extends as well to Clarissa Hightower and the other leaders of color that I've been able to interact with. We can't do it without their perspective, but we're the ones who have to do the work. And we're the ones that have to model that behavior. All of us, from the least paid to the highest paid in the district. And so I appreciate that focus. Beyond that, I also have a report for you about the WASTA 2025 General Assembly. I attended on Saturday. For the most part, each of the positions passed or failed based on the committee's recommendations. So the board's amendment proposal on amendments for the bylaws did pass, but the proposals about model policy and procedure development did not pass. Some exceptions did take place. Let me see. There was active, active debate on the amendment proposal regarding parents and families are important stakeholders in their children's education. But that motion failed, and that was the committee's recommendation for that position. And on governance training, which was offered by Seattle. And that motion failed, which aligned with the position. The other position that failed was the new position proposal for climate change education and sustainability. There was active debate, but it seemed to me, listening to that debate, that it centered more around the suspicion or despair that the legislature would mandate something without funding it than the merits of the actual proposal. In each of these cases, the failure was about two-thirds to one-third against. You had asked me to watch the debate on position number 27, which also failed. This had to do with school athletics officials and a desire for legislation that would extend some protections to other volunteers and greater protections to school athletics officials. On the pro side, those who spoke in favor of the position had seen firsthand the hazards of sports officials. They talked about parents out of control on a ref call, that kind of thing. That recent competitions have been canceled. Recent sporting competitions have been canceled because officials weren't available. That pool is getting smaller, and the climate on the field is getting scarier. And they expressed a need for support from the WASTA position. On the con side, it was pointed out that there are laws already in place and that adding consequences would be overstepping, which was in alignment with the committee's rationale in recommending a due not pass. I was persuaded to join those who voted con because of an argument about local control. And again, that sentiment among the membership of WASTA that handing this to the legislature would mandate something which is not then funded. So our, the result of that was aligned with how I was persuaded based on those arguments. I agree wholeheartedly that boisterous conduct and the abuse of officials and others at a game are not appropriate. But like the people who testified con, we have our superintendent, our athletic director, and principals and vice principals who have responsibility to uphold those standards. And I'm confident in the work that they can do. Are there any questions for me about the General Assembly?
We're going to, we have to get together to vote on priorities, correct?
That's right. And because of the priority prioritization window that WASTA's opened, we're going to have to meet in a workshop before the 9th of October in order for me to be able to fill out that form with our top 10 priorities.
We'll schedule something.
Okay. I appreciate that. And that's what I have to say.
Yeah. I apologize missing the beginning of the meeting. I'll go back and review the public comments. I know that's usually my favorite part of the meeting to, you know, review and hear from the public. And yeah, I as well was surprised to hear Dr. Singleton's leaving us. And I wish her well in her next endeavor. And my, my heart goes out to the family of the father that was killed just walking his son home from elementary school. It's, yeah, sad. And yeah, there's also nationally, we've had some other tragedies recently. I know that another school shooting in Colorado and also the assassination of Charlie Kirk, you know, a free speech advocate. And, you know, I just want to, you know, murder, quite simply, is wrong. And especially murdering someone because you, because they express beliefs you don't agree with. If we can't agree on that, there's nothing left to debate. And I know the House of Representatives passed a resolution. It was unanimously passed by one party. Majority of the other party passed it. And I know our Clark County Council is also reviewing one currently. And I forwarded to you guys a resolution. So yeah, I just want to, it's just a resolution condemning political and religious violence. And, you know, we got a lot of students and I know they've been affected by this and just seeing things, you know, through social media. And yeah, just if we could work on that at a board workshop, I'd appreciate it. So I guess it's up to you guys to, that would be my vote, but.
I think we can schedule a workshop probably before. Our next meeting is October 14th. So we just have to get our schedule together.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I saw that you sent it to us earlier today, and I really haven't had a chance to review it yet. So, you know, when we pass a resolution, it's usually around a subject matter. And then it's usually where we have a directive for the district and something that we want to have happen to improve or something that we're focused on. And really, I mean, the, the idea of like, just what you said about, you know, civility and how we talk to each other and how our communities can react. So I would be interested maybe in looking at something to that effect about just maybe civility and, and what we want for our students.
Yeah, thank you.
And how we tie it back to what we want for our students.
True, true. And again, I'm thankful for the agreement reached between the district and the PSE large group. And this was my first strike, and I hope it's my last. And, and talking with many of you, I, I've heard a lot about having an open bargaining. And I would love to see that myself. So just leave it at that. So I just know we could do better in the future. So thank you for everybody involved. Thanks.
I wanted to thank everyone who came and spoke for public comment today. We had a lot of diverse and important perspectives and views shared with us. And I want to continue to encourage people to come and share with us things that make others uncomfortable, push us to do better, because that's what we're here for. We're here to make sure that our students get what they need and what they deserve. And everybody in this room has a single, which is to help students and put students first. And as a board, I think that's what we have always strived to do and is something that we all agree on. I want to say that Dr. Jay leaving us is very sad for me. I started as a parent on the Equity Advisory Committee with Dr., with Clarissa Hightower, and Jim LaWes there. And they're the reason I'm sitting here today. They encouraged me to do something I would never have thought I wanted to do. And I sometimes think, what did they get me into? But their goal was to make sure that there was representation for everybody in their district. And seeing them in the building was really important to me. Seeing them in the audience was important to me. Seeing them leave makes, hurts my heart. So she led with kindness and compassion. Her leadership was exemplary, and she was just so wise. And so we really appreciate her contributions. The, and I'm sorry, I had thought I'd gotten over the whole, like, I got emotional at meetings thing. But the community work that she did this year was amazing. The way you felt when you walked into the space, this room, was wonderful. And it's how I want every parent and community member and student and staff member to feel, which is how she made people feel in this room. So it makes me happy to hear that that work will continue. We'll be watching closely to make sure it continues because it's important to us. And we say it, that it's important to us, but we really, really mean it. It really is important to us. I also want to say that we really appreciate our PSE staff, their hard work, the way they show up for our kids. And we are, we're very grateful that we've come to a conclusion of this. And I realize, of course, that I say that we came to an agreement, but I want to make sure that we continue to work together to move forward in a way that's positive for everybody, especially our students. Because when we work together as adults, we make all of our kids' lives better. And that's what's most important. It is 7:19. And at 7:29, the board will enter into an executive session under RCS420.111F, Complaints of Charges Against a Public Officer/Employee until 7:39. Once the executive session has concluded, please, okay, so that's for me, sorry. Thank you, good night. Good night.[1775.13][1775.13][music]